...of June. It's the day that we, that the allied forces invaded Normandy, just as a little history lesson for you all. And a lot of good men and women died. Sorry for that somber note, but we just had Memorial Day, so. All right. So we'll call the meeting to order. And the first order of business tonight is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. And I believe that Bill, I'm going to butcher your name, Bill, Heinley. Bill Heinley is here tonight from the Associate Pastor of the First Presbyterian Church. So please join us in our invocation and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Please pray with me. Gracious God, we gather here this evening to ask your grace and mercy upon this meeting of the city council. We ask you to grant your wisdom upon this council so that they may make wise and just decisions for all the people who call this their home. May there be peaceful and productive discourse among all those gathered here today. May our single-minded purpose be to accomplish the best for the most according to your way. Grant your blessing upon the proceedings this evening and each one here present. We ask these things in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
If you'd please join me in a pledge to our flag that represents our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Bill. Thank you Mr. Powell. All right Gloria, please let the roll call show that all council members are present.
So noted.
Item C is our minutes.
Okay, as far as the minutes go Mayor, we've got, we need to approve the city council regular meeting minutes from May 16th and, and consider the approval of the payment of claims for May 11th.
That's it, that's it Mr. Powell, just the, just the minutes from the council meeting.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the minister approved. Next is item D, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated May 11th to May 31st, 2022, as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain Mayor.
Okay. One abstention. All right, next item is item E, which is our meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Rains?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone from council, any changes to the agenda? All right, seeing no changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the meeting agenda is approved, as presented. We do have a special presentation tonight. So on the agenda, it doesn't have all of the presentation, pardon me?
We did an addendum to F, we have an F2, we have an F1 first, then we issued an addendum for an F2.
So do you want me to do F1 first?
Please.
Okay, so F1, is that the youth commission? Okay, because I don't have F2 on my agenda.
It's on the back side.
On the back, oh well, I have the one I printed.
And Councilmember Herman has the plaques for F1.
Yes, I was going to hand that off to him, but, okay, just realized that I didn't have the correct one.
There you go.
Yeah, I know, but where's F2?
Right there.
Okay. It's the law? All right. All right, so tonight we do have two special presentations, I'm sorry. I printed the one off that I got earlier this week, so that's my bad. So we do have recognition for the youth commission advisors tonight, and so I'm going to hand that off to the youth commission representative from the city of council, Mr. Matt Herman. The floor is yours, Mr. Herman.
So for as long as I've been on council, I've been the liaison to the, the youth commission from the city council, and almost just as long, Kendra Bray and her very good friend Crystal have been the volunteer advisors, spending their own time, and let me tell you, I couldn't do it without them. And they're leaving us this year. They'll still be around for a little bit of help, but I don't know how we're going to do it.
Do they have to leave together?
They do everything together, they both had babies. Yeah, they both had babies over their term, you know, I mean, they do.
They're a package deal.
And the interesting part is, they are best friends from being on the youth commission so many years ago. So they were on the youth commission as high schools, high schoolers, and then they came back and volunteered countless, countless hours of their time, many Saturdays, many organizational duties, and again, I'm just the pretty face, and, I'm just kidding, much more than me, but they do the work, they get the organization done, they help me communicate with the kids, they help me remember all the kids' names, you know, everything that they do. And they have these amazing organizational skills, communication skills, and just a passion for our city and for our youth. And without them, we would not be the award-winning commission where we are today. Crystal couldn't make it tonight, obviously, just Kendra's here, but of course, I'm going to ask Kendra again to pick out some slack for me and deliver this to her friend Crystal, as I normally do. And a small token of our appreciation from the city, we have these plaques, and it says, appreciation plaque presented to Kendra Bray for her dedicated service as a Casa Grande Youth Commission Advisor from 2013 to 2022, generously dedicating countless hours of time and energy helping to shape the future leaders of our city. Your dedication has made a huge impact on the lives of the youth in the community, and it's signed by Craig McFarland, the mayor.
Matt, that kind of volunteerism is really impressive, even we thank you.
I mean, I, I, it's hard for me to say this, I can't say enough about them, but they, they did assure me they'll help me with the, the planning this year. We have a couple of our, our returning members back here, and some new members coming, which we'll talk about later, but I just can't say enough how much time, energy, they give up for the youth. And then Kendra always manages to be the voice of encouragement and have these words of wisdom to say to the kids. She's a teacher by trade too, so she's very good at that as well, as well as Crystal, so they've helped us on many levels with the districts and with everything else. So we are just very fortunate to have had them. And I tried to say, you know, 2013 to 2022 is not quite an even, you know, we could have gone for 10 years, and they said, no.
Donna did nine years as our advisor, so we thought it was fair if we did nine years as an advisor.
And I was like, you can be longer than Donna.
Yeah, you should go for the record.
Yes. But anyway, just so much appreciation to you guys and gals, and, you know, they, they have their own kids that they're raising, and they're really small, and they still manage to give so much, organize the, the retreats, which they're going to help me with this year, they promised, and we'll have some new advisors. We cannot fill their shoes or replace them, but we can hope to at least live up to what they've done, so.
Well, I know that you are going to do an amazing job bringing whoever replaces us into the field and really teaching them everything that we did, because we couldn't have done anything without you. I mean, you keep us going, we might be the organization, but you're the one who keeps steamrolling us along, we always appreciate you.
I just know more people, that's all. But anyway, it's really bittersweet for me, and I'm getting a little, but anyway, thank you very much. And there's a couple more little things, and, you know, it's like a beauty pageant. You'll have to deliver to Crystal on our behalf, and I hope she's watching on TV. And we do appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
And you're just a phone call away, I know.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more special presentation tonight for one of our... One of the greatest teachers actually in the city of Casa Grande. And if I can ask Joanne Kramer to please come up here with me, I'd appreciate it. We're, we've got a little video that was put together for you, and so I wanted you to be here with me to watch that video. It doesn't look like her. It doesn't look like Joanne.
One of the things that I have emphasized with leaders that I've worked with is Joanne Kramer had the greatest sense of urgency that I've ever seen in my career. She took every day with the utmost importance, she never took a day off. She came to work every day, ready to work hard from when she probably arrived at 6:30 in the morning.
I don't see a leader's role necessarily as being only a mentor. I think we mentor others, and I think we are mentored by others. And Joanne was one of those people who certainly mentored me.
It was in 1978, and she had come to Casa Grande and started her first teaching job over at Ocatillo, and she was a reading specialist. And I had come in from Stanfield, Arizona, and it was my very first teaching opportunity in Casa Grande.
Joanne and I became friends when we sat on the banks of the Casa Grande Union High School pool and watched our three or four-year-olds take swim lessons. And I started back to work at Ironwood Elementary School. Joanne was the reading teacher at Ironwood.
Well, we're here where it all started, Ironwood Elementary, 26 years ago. And at that time, Joanne was my Title I teacher, and I used to love to go in and watch her teach, because she was like an Energizer Bunny. She worked so hard with those students, and I learned so much from her about how to approach teaching, because Joanne had this belief that all kids could learn.
I started working with Joanne at Ironwood School, but 1996, I think, I worked there two years with her. And then she became principal at McCartney Ranch in 2007, and I transferred over there.
You know, I remember, this would have been in the early 2000s, Joanne had come to work out of the district office, and I know that she had started to gain certification and licensure as a principal. Most folks who go into the principalship nowadays really get an interest in it about three to five years into teaching, but, you know, Joanne was much farther into her career. And, you know, those of us around her at the time, you know, I remember talking to folks in the district office, and, you know, kind of the universal opinion was, that's a really good thing, she's going to be a good principal.
And then, Joanne approached Doris and I one day and said he was going to a brand-new school at that time, McCartney Ranch. Well evidently, she caught us in a moment of weakness, because we agreed to it, and then after we'd already committed and agreed to it, we found out that the school was not going to be completed, and I had to take home 35 years of you-know-what to my house.
You know, she was able to, to attract a lot of really capable teachers to join in that effort, and so, you know, the, the opening of that school was really a model for others as to how to go about that.
Coming to McCartney Ranch and opening a new school was a lot of fun. We hit the ground running, right away, starting to prep ourselves to work towards becoming an A-plus school.
And so she stayed there a few years at McCartney Ranch and earned A-plus status for McCartney Ranch, and, and I remember her coming to me one day when, when we had talked about moving to Palaverdi, and, and that was something that she was really interested in doing. And Palaverdi is very grateful that she had that interest. I think her, her reasoning for wanting to help Palaverdi and leave a school where she was very comfortable and go to Palaverdi, I think her reasoning was really driven by this strong sense of social justice. She saw the, the students and staff and parents at Palaverdi as deserving of, of more than, than what they were experiencing.
And it was such a joy a couple of years ago to go to Palaverdi when she hosted the barbecue, when Palaverdi got A+, because I think there are a lot of people that doubted that Palaverdi would do that, but there was absolutely no doubt in my mind with her sense of urgency, her work ethic, her optimism that it was going to happen, and it did. And, and being an A-plus judge and being on the inside, I know that it was a slam dunk.
But for her, I think Joanne could go in and help make a difference for those students, and help it to become a more special place than it already was. And, you know, I was there today with an international, a team doing international research, wanting to see Palaverdi and research Palaverdi and learn from Palaverdi and learn about Joanne's leadership, so that's a tremendous tribute, going back to her desire to go there. She wanted to go there to make it a special place, and she certainly accomplished that.
She's left a legacy that's going to carry on for decades in our district, and people are going to talk about the impact that she's had, not only at the schools but in the communities, just her generosity, her heart, her smile.
She's, she's been an amazing principal, she's been a wonderful friend, and I just hope you enjoy your retirement, Joanne, because you deserved it, you worked very hard.
Best absolute wishes to Joanne and the fantastic next chapter in her life, she's going to get to enjoy those grandbabies even more.
Joanne, congratulations, enjoy those grandbabies.
It's just been such an honor, Joanne, to work with you these last 26 years. I love you, we're going to miss you, but I know this isn't the end.
Now can I get all the Kramers to come up front here, please? That's everybody, grandkids. First of all, I know I sat on, sat in on the community portion of the A-plus grilling that we got from the school districts or the, from the state for Palaverdi, and, and it was, it was an interesting exercise, to say the least. It wasn't the first one I'd been on, but, but it was, it was, it was exciting, and to know that you, you actually did it at two different schools is amazing. That's an amazing accomplishment, so congratulations to you on that alone, is a monumental feat. So, and nothing's ever a slam dunk in something like that, so, sorry, Mr. Lavender, but it took a lot of work, and maybe it's slam dunk because she's that good. There you go, okay, all right, okay. So, you know, on behalf of the city and, and our, and the city council, I did want to also present you with the key to the city, so we appreciate everything that you've done. So thank you so much. And, and we can all kind of, everybody kind of gather in here. Come on in. You guys come in now. All right, congratulations. Do you want to say a couple things?
Sure. Principals never short of words. That's right. Well, 40 years, wow, that's a long time, isn't it? I have teachers that weren't even that old. When I first came to town, it was 1978, and it was a hot July afternoon, and I walked into the district office, and Dean Skaggs answered the door. Raise your hand if you remember who he was. Couple of you, not many of you. He was a superintendent. And he said, you looking for a job? And I said, I'd love a job. So he said, just a minute, and he called David Hernandez. Remember David Hernandez? David came, they interviewed me, they, once they found out I spoke Spanish, they hired me immediately, and so I became the EL teacher in the district. At that time, in 1978, there were five fewer schools in this community than there are now, so we've really grown. In 1986, I went to work at McCartney Ranch, there wasn't even a paved road on Cottonwood Lane there, if you can imagine, the buses didn't go down the road when it was raining. This all sounds like, you know, it was me, but believe me, none of this was about me, it was about the teachers and staff that I work with, and you can look in the audience, there are a couple of them here. Katie Heather, stand up. These girls were part of the reason that we became an A-plus school. It's all about the teachers, it's not about anybody else, it's about the people that are in front of those students. ARP, you're amazing. They were at my school last year. People like this are what make this community successful, so it's the volunteers, it's not anybody else, it's the people that are in front of those children. I was a reading teacher for 20 years, and like Mr. Lavender said, that early literacy, if our children aren't proficient readers by the end of third grade, they're going to struggle the rest of their life. So that's what we need to continue working on, is making sure that they become good readers. Thank you for everything, I'll be using this key.
You have grandchildren too, right there.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Mayor, before we move forward, I just wanted Joanne just to, I'm not in the education field, but I just, you know, appreciate you as a female leader in our community, and I've had the privilege of working with you over the last, I think, 14 years on the Caesar Chavez Committee. And so when I watched the video and saw Dr. Davidson talk about your commitment to social justice and those children deserving more, and serving those most vulnerable, you do, and I, and I see it, and it's just really, and I, I'm getting emotional. It's just been really a privilege, just, just seeing what you do for the community and that particular community and working with us on that, it's not just the elementary school kids, you're, you also care about the, those moving on to, you know, graduating and the scholarships and everything, so I just thank you for everything you've done and just being, you know, just a role model for me and, and me, me working with you over the years. It's really been a pleasure, and hope, you're not going anywhere, so we're going to keep you on that.
Thank you, I am not. I have a lot of energy left, and I will be volunteering.
Good, good. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, now after that, we'll move to item G, which is our consent agenda item. All asked, all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. So is there anyone in the audience or on the council who would like to remove any of the consent agenda items? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
All right, next is item H, which is our public comments section, and this is a, an opportunity for the public to address the council on a subject. Just as a reminder, we do not, it's not, if it's not on the agenda, we cannot comment on it, but we can direct staff to, to follow up with you at a, at a later point. So if you are interested, please approach the podium, and you have three minutes, and state your name and your address, please, for our records.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janice Pratt, and I'm at 425 East Providence Drive, and I want to give a shout out, Joanne, she's done a fabulous job. I mean, what a wonderful person, her legacy will be here for forever. And this has been a very positive meeting with the reading programs and what you're doing for the youth commission, and you may ask, why am I here? Well, I'm representing a group of people, and I'm concerned that if I'm not here, I might miss something. And this was a great meeting, so thank you very much. I have nothing to add to our situation, only, I'm not certain where it's going. This is in regards to Spanish Trails West, which is, was in April, in May, and now we're in June, and I don't know what's going to be happening next. So, but we're still at the same level, and thank you very much for all your hard work, and that's all I have to say.
And we're going to have staff follow up with you, because there has been some developments in terms of when they, it will be back on the docket.
Okay.
Okay? And Larry, you follow up with?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And my name is Nancy Wood, and 513 East Buckle Road, and I was just joining, as with, helping her with the community, as far as the area that the development is in, a lot of the neighbors there, I have a lot of grounded, long-term, you know, really good community, and we were looking forward to having it planned as it was, and we were just following through with seeing how that plays out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight? All right, seeing no one else, then I will close the floor, and we'll move to our ward of contracts, I-1, be the first item on the agenda, not the first item on the agenda, but first, in section I.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve a contract with CCS Facility Services for janitorial services of 16 city facilities in an amount not to exceed $556,484. We're also looking for an allowance of $10,000, and additionally, don't want the amount that we spend utilizing this contract to exceed our, our budgeted amounts. What we're looking for is opportunities to take advantage of budgets that, excuse me, budgets that are, or, excuse me, contracts that are in place. And so we're looking for an amount not to exceed the budgeted authority that we've been given, so.
With that change, we did solicit for bids for this project, and we received two submittals, and after reviewing those, CCS Facility Services was the lowest and most responsible and responsive bidder. And so they will be taking care of 16 of our city facilities throughout the city, which represents square footage of 236,276 square feet. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, is it the same group that's been doing it?
It is not. This will be a new...
So this is a new, new company?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll keep an eye on it, make sure that service is the same?
Absolutely. Typically, when we do these bids, we do multiple-year options, but with our new procurement officer, Roy Dobson, he, he looked at the process and really wants to work with us to develop even a better bid process for next year, so we're looking forward to that.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 3334, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from PBC Phoenix, Inc., DBA CCS Facility Services for Janitorial Services, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to CCS Facility Services LLC.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 330, 3334, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is I-2. Kevin, that you too?
Yes. Staff is recommending the mayor and city council award a contract for manhole rehabilitation services to Ames Coatings LLC, doing businesses Southwest Environmental. This agreement would provide sewer cleaning services and job order basis...
This agreement would provide sewer cleaning services and job-order basis contracts in an amount not to exceed $500,000. And again, this is the amount that we've budgeted for this line item in our budget, but we're going to be looking for authority to spend funds up to the amount that you approve in the budget, so we're able to take advantage of this contract with any emergencies that may come up, to hopefully shorten the timeline for us to respond to issues. And the city has developed this program. We've been running this program for several years. It's been very successful. We've been cleaning a lot of our sewer lines to help manage, if not reduce, the level of H2S in our sewer systems, as well as our manhole rehabilitation efforts. So we're looking to continue that effort so that we have a system that we can rely on moving forward. We did a statement of qualifications for this and had four responders to the solicitation. And based on our evaluation, Southwest Environmental was the most qualified contractor. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just had one question. Larry, I know you had sent us a note last week about the emergency manhole repairs. This is not that.
It's not that.
This is our regular maintenance, manhole maintenance. Okay, so that was, that's a separate subject, right? Okay, all right. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, thank you, Kevin. Seeing none, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 3335, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Ames Coating LLC, DBA Southwest Environmental, Inc., for the manhole rehabilitation program, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Southwest Environmental, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3335 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
And I did want to make note, because I know Steve Weaver's on vacation this week, but Mackenzie Lecter is in the driver's seat over here, running the videos, so, Mackenzie, good to see you over there. It looks good on you, by the way. All right. Next is J-1, which is considering approval appointment of our Casa Grande Youth Commission with terms to extend through June 30 of 2023. And I'm going to ask Matt if he would identify those who have been nominated by the committee, and then Gloria, you can do what you need to do on this one. Says it's you, but.
Okay, Matt.
Matt can do the whole thing? Okay, all right. Matt, you're in charge.
You trust me. So just briefly, the Casa Grande Youth Commission was established on December 6, 2004. Don McBride was a big part of that. This organization's mission is to represent the youth of our city, making it a better place through dedication, leadership, and creativity. Commission members are Pinal County residents who are actively enrolled in public or private school, including charter schools, virtual schools, and home schools in grades eight through 12, including up to two members-at-large from lower, upper-grade level of education. So we get all the schools, and we've got most of them involved from middle schools up through the high school. We're very excited. And this year, we had more applicants than I can remember ever. So for about, so for 16 seats, we had returning and new members, over 35 applicants, which a lot of years we were like hoping to get enough to fill 16.
Fill the seats, yeah.
So we're getting some traction. And the Youth Commission concentrates on, we focused, we do a lot of community service, but it's really about government and the youth that wants to know about how the city works, working with the city, and being those leaders. So we've got a very, very good group, strong group. We've got some returning, some new members, almost half and half, and a good diverse group of kids. So with that, I'll announce the names. From the reappointment side, we have Anthony Amato, Gracie Anila, Emma Anila, Tia Ray Lewis, Mila Lopez, Landon Moglia, Iris Moreno, Alexis O'Neil, and L. Wiles. Now, new members, we have Sawyer Barth, Kiara Cruz, Leilani Highland, Drake Maestis, Reese Maestis, Sheldon Moglia, and Alex Ortega. So that will be our 16. Now, this group of kids was chosen by the existing Youth Commission through an extensive interview process that took all day one Saturday, but it was great that we had that. And thanks again to Crystal and Kendra's organization, technological know-how for the voting process, and just organizational skills. I usually have the ideas and they say, well, we can kind of do that, Matt, but this is how we're going to do it to make it work. So, and that's a true story. So with that, we got these kids and we're excited. And the youth that didn't make it are always invited to come to all of our meetings, an open public meeting, they can participate in all of our activities, and it's a great way for them to meet the kids and be concerned again for the next, for the next Youth Commission. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to forward these names for approval. So I move to accept the appointments to the Casa Grande Youth Commission as presented.
Second.
Before we take a vote, I did want to compliment the four who are here, and I think that, tell Anthony that he may have slipped a notch, because he's not here. All right? I know that's going to devastate him, but I want you to tell him that, so that he understands that he may not be the top dog anymore, okay? All right.
You can always depend on the Anila sisters, let me tell you.
That's right. So, all right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor to approve those listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, unanimously accepted, so thank you and congratulations. Thank you, guys. All right, let's move to item K-1, which is Financial Adoption Ordinance. I won't read through the whole thing. So Gloria, is this yours?
Yes, Mayor, this appears for a second reading and is not under the consent agenda because we did have one council member vote against it. We have ordinance number 1178.234.1, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to planned area development on property located generally south of the southeast corner of Florence Boulevard and Hacienda Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.234.1.
Second.
All right, yes, sir.
Can we have a moment of discussion?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah. I just wanted to point out, I voted yes on this, and I intend to vote on it the same tonight, but I know this isn't a public hearing. I don't know if there's anyone here to speak about it, but there was a letter to the editor from a resident from Mission Royale that opposed this, so I didn't know if we had anyone here that wanted to speak.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, but if there is someone here who would like to speak, I would open the floor for them to.
Thank you for doing that.
Approach the council. Don't see anyone, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Anybody else have any other discussion on this? All right, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
We did have an ordinance number.
Oh, we already did, never mind. I think we already did it. We have a first and a second. Motion and a second, please, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Sorry. Sidetracked me, Bob.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell?
No, until they connect with Hacienda Road and Selma.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is item L-1, which is a public hearing. And Planning and Development Department, Mr. Teis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If you'll recall, I was, at your March 7 study session, I briefed council on some changes that planning staff is proposing to make to our PAD residential design guidelines. And since that meeting, we took council input, pulled together the formal revisions, took them to the Planning Commission, held a public hearing, did a little stakeholder outreach, and we're back here tonight with the specific proposal for your consideration. See if I can get this to work here.
Mackenzie sabotaged it.
Is the toggle, maybe the toggle's not in. Thank you. Can you just do that for me? Thank you, I appreciate that. So if you recall, we're not, this is not a wholesale revision of the PAD residential design guidelines. It's really kind of a fine-tuning. Specifically, the areas we're going to talk about a little bit are the open space, there's been some changes to open space, some modifications to lot sizes, modification to how we process housing product review or architectural review, and a slight revision to our multifamily development site standards. I can say in general, what's driving these changes is an effort to try to extend our water resources farther, to allow them to provide water to more homes, potentially. So I'm going to explain that in just a second. So the new state law, there's a new state law that allows, and actually compels, Arizona Department of Water Resources to increase the number of certificates of assured water supply that were allocated to a subdivision that has not been built yet, that's a vacant subdivision. If the developer of the subdivision can show that whatever increase in number of cause that they're seeking uses no more water than was allocated at the prior time the subdivision received its cause. When a subdivision receives its certificates of assured water supply, it not only gets a number of certificates to service a number of lots, support a number of lots, but also has an acre-feet allocation of water that's allocated to that subdivision. So the new law allows a land developer to make, to prove their case that whatever increase in the number of lots they're seeking, that it uses no more acre-feet than the prior allocation. They're able to do, to make that argument because of changes to water efficiency with modern plumbing appliances, but probably most importantly, with changes to the outdoor irrigation systems and the kind of outdoor landscaping that's going to be provided, because frankly, most of the water with the single-family homes is used for outdoor landscaping, not internal use. So that's a big change, and they can, and the developer can control that in a variety of ways, mostly through their CCNRs. So when some, when this new law was passed, some owners of vacant subdivisions came to us and said, hey, we'd like to increase the number of lots in this subdivision so we could take advantage of this new regulation that ADWR has with regard to cause, but we can't, we can't increase our number of lots under your current PAD zone because of your lot sizes. And we understood that at a planning staff level, so we actually supported that many of those PADs to be rezoned to R2 versus PAD, so they could actually take advantage of the increase in cause that might potentially be allocated. Through that process, we had seven subdivisions that were rezoned from PAD to R2 to essentially allow them an increase in lots. But staff was concerned that we not degrade the quality of these subdivisions and maintain an equal quality to what we were realizing in our PAD zone subdivisions. So what happened, I think, can go to the next slide? You can go to the next slide, it's okay. And we achieved, we achieved that objective by imposing, imposing a number of conditions of record on these R2 zones that require them to basically develop to the PAD standards other than lot sizes. So essentially, we were creating R2 zone subdivisions that had PAD design standards, except for the lot sizes. But there were some concerns raised by both city council and planning commission and other members of the community about that approach. And this kind of shows, this slide shows you, I think summarizes those concerns, and one was that, that we were creating just too many 5,000-square-foot lots, which is the minimum lot size in the R2, that the side yard setbacks of five feet and five feet were not adequate, that the side yard setbacks should be, remain as five and 10 foot, as in the PAD zone. And that the narrower lot widths of 50-foot, 45-foot wide lots actually reduces the amount of on-street parking and can create congestion in these new subdivisions. All of these were very legitimate concerns from staff's, from a planning perspective. Next slide. So in response to those concerns, what staff proposed to do was to simply, let's just change our PAD design standards to allow some increase in the number of lots that was, that will allow developers to take advantage of the increased cause that they might be able to achieve through ADWR, but still maintain a quality residential subdivision. And so that's what we have before you tonight, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the specific changes here in lot size with an open space. Next slide. So the current PAD design standards require that for every, you can actually have a lot that's down to 6,000 square feet, but for every lot that's less than 7,000 square feet, you have to provide a lot that's an equal number of lots that are 8,000 square feet or larger. So the new language allows a lot as small as 5,500 square feet. However, it requires that 25% of the lots in each final plat should be at least 6,500. So we're going to, you know, guarantee a lot mix here, at least 25% are going to be larger, 6,500 square feet or larger, none smaller than 5,500. So we bumped it up from the R2, which is 5,000 minimum, and we required that there's going to, we're going to achieve some level of a lot mix. Now, there was, one of the things we were concerned about was that a developer who owned a very large subdivision that was, maybe had a preliminary plat, that they wouldn't just do a final plat, they would just final plat all the small lots and not the larger lots. So that's why we require that the lot mix actually be within each final plat, to make sure that we were in fact going to get the larger lots. During the planning commission public hearing, that issue was discussed. Some developers said, hey, we got some issues with this, we might, sometimes when we plat subdivisions, we plat one section for a builder who wants some smaller lots, another section for a builder that wants larger lots. Sometimes it doesn't work from a business standpoint to intermix them within the plat, but we certainly could do two plats and record them at the same time. So that seemed reasonable. The objective making is that we ensure that we get the larger lots. And another developer mentioned, hey, I might have already platted the larger lots, and the only thing I have left in my next phase, I should just be able to do the smaller lots in my next phase, because I already created all the larger lots. And that made some sense, too. So we do have these two exceptions under, that the lots have to be in the same final plat. They don't have to be in the same final plat, but we have to have a mechanism to ensure that the larger lots are in fact created. Next slide, please. The minimum lot width in our current PAD standards is 55. We're reducing it to 50, and the R4, R2, it could be 45. Now, the 50-foot wide lot does allow a developer to build a 35-foot wide home, which is a very common lot width for a production home. And they can create a 35-foot wide home and still meet our side yard setbacks, which you're going to see in a second, our five feet and 10 feet. So you do have to have five and 10. We're not allowing the five and five. That can be achieved on a 50-foot wide lot. In reality... In reality, what's going to probably happen is those lots that are larger, where developers are going to want to put larger homes, because they're going to have a mix, they're going to go to wider than 50, 50 is the minimum, I'm quite positive that we're going to get a nice mix of lot widths with, between 50 as a minimum and whatever, you know, the upper range is on that, I'm not sure, but there'll be a range of lot widths. Next slide. So, here's something that's pretty interesting, the, our current PAD design standards that only required 15% open space. When we went to the R2 rezonings, Planning Commission decided and gave us direction that said, you know, 15% open space is really not enough, we want to go to 20, these lots are smaller, you have less private yard space, you need more common open space to compensate for that, so we think it should be 20%. So, we wrote 20% open space in these standards, but then, actually with some input for the stakeholder process, and including input from our city attorney's office and from our Planning Commission, the suggestion was made, why don't you create some incentive for creating some larger lots? And so, we did that. You can see that it's 20%, if you are meeting the typical 5,500 square foot and 6,500 square foot lots, but if you provide some larger lots, per the standard we have today, which is that you have the same number of lots that are, have 8,000 square feet or over, in comparison to those less than 7,000, we're going to reduce your open space from 20% down to 15. And even further, if you have 50% of your lots that are 20,000 square feet or larger, which is about a half acre, so if 50% of your lots are 20,000 square feet or larger, we're going to reduce your open space down to 10%. So, there's an incentive built in for developers who want to provide larger lots, or another way to think about it, we're not penalizing them for creating larger lots. These both were very good modifications, in my opinion, to the proposal. Next slide. This change really was just to allow the housing product, housing product or the architectural review of the various house designs and house plans to happen administratively versus having to go to Planning Commission. It'll just streamline the process, the review criteria is exactly the same, it's just administrative, but we built in an appeal process where if the applicant doesn't agree with Planning Staff's decision, they can appeal to Planning Commission. But there are very, very rarely any controversy associated with, with housing product. The last change is simply one that's, in these residential design guidelines, they're mostly about single-family, but there is a multifamily section as well, and in the multifamily section, we actually have a buffer requirement for, well, we have 25-foot setback where multifamily, and that includes build-to-rent, by the way, is adjacent to single-family homes or single-family development. So, the setback is 25 feet from any building to the property line of the resident, of the single-family development, and within that 25 feet, we require a 15-foot buffer. And so, this change just simply says, in that 15-foot buffer, you can't make that somebody's backyard, has to just be dedicated open space, what we like to see is like common trails and walkways put through there, things that the residents of the multifamily complex can use, and it can really function as a nice, you know, buffer space for the adjacent single-family. If we have, if that was really somebody's backyard with that kind of activity, it wouldn't function very well as a buffer. So, that was just really a small technical tweak, but I want to make you aware of that. Next slide. So, we did all the public hearing, we, we did send this proposal out to, to many of our consulting engineers, consulting planners, land use attorneys, land developers, builders, we received a little bit of input that I discussed with you tonight. Planning Commission had a public hearing, and in the end, Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend that City Council adopt these revised residential design standards. And with that, that summarizes my presentation. Oh, seven zero says, I thought it was six zero, sorry.
Everybody was there. Thank you, Paul. Does anybody have any comments or questions, Mr. Powell?
Can we get a copy of this? What you've got here page-wise, can we get a copy of it?
Yes, Mr. Powell, it should be attached to your RCA. It was in the packet?
It's in your packet?
It should be in part of your packet.
And the version actually has strikeouts that shows all the changes made in red, the, the red text is the new text and the strikeouts, so you all should have this attached to your RCA. But I can get you another copy if you'd like one.
You can get copies on that.
He'll get you a copy.
Yeah, yes, absolutely, you all should have one, but I can get you another one, absolutely.
One of the things that concerns me is, is I think it's quality and not quantity that we really need to be underlying in our development products, and, and the compatibility, which you've worked pretty good on, I think that's something we need to keep doing with, with what it's next to, or how it might affect another neighborhood or whatever, so if I could get a copy of that, I'd be a happy boy.
Matt, thank you.
Yeah, Paul, I really like what we saw tonight about the incentivizing of the larger lots, that's a great way to do it, and that way, because if we kept it at the 15 or 20%, there'd be, you know, who would build larger lots, they can't do it. But this is what we keep hearing from, from people buying homes and developers, that they, they don't want the big yards so much anymore, some people do, some don't, so this is a great mix of that. Am I understanding correct is then, if this is adopted, then we wouldn't have to change, we wouldn't have to use the R2 anymore, right, to overlay the PADs, we would just have our new PAD guidelines, so we wouldn't have to go through all that and have some question about the R2 versus PAD, single-family?
Thank you. That, that is correct, the R2 zone would continue to, the R2 zone would continue to exist as a zoning code district, but there, you know, there really is not much reason for a developer to not go this route versus R2. For maybe small infill sites, that might still make sense, but on the green, large greenfield sites, the PAD makes the most sense.
But probably like all the last, I think, seven or so that we've done, we wouldn't have to go to the R2, we could stick with this. And in the study session, you had a great chart, it was, I would like to see in there tonight, but even though they can have these smaller lots, most of the lots skew towards the bigger, a median lot size around 6,000 to 7,000, is that?
That is correct, they, they weren't all 5,000, they did provide a mix even though they weren't required to. We'll continue to see that kind of mix, maybe even to a greater degree with this proposal.
Just to be clear, they're not all 5,000 square foot lots.
Thank you.
Mr. Lavender?
Can you go back to the slide with the 15-foot buffer, please? Paul, did those, back one more.
There you go.
Does that, do those dots on the fence mean anything? That doesn't mean it has to be a half fence.
No, what, what, well, what you're seeing there is what we typically happens with, this is a build-to-rent kind of graphic, and then the build-to-rent project, products, if you recall them, they usually have a very small rear yard, like 10 feet, and they usually are, have some kind of either picket fence or patio wall around them, just basically very small patios in the build-to-rent. It's not required, it's just what the, what the, what the industry builds.
Good work on this, thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, Paul, the 10 and 5-foot side setbacks, is that what we have now, or is that reduced?
It is what we have now in our PAD standards, it's not what we have in the R2. The R2 was five and five, our current PAD does require five and 10, so that is not being changed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, the attempt is to encourage them to stay in the PAD requirements, right, so that we get to five and 10 versus a five and five.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Right, Paul, that's, now, does this also address the, the build-for-rent product too, right, your, some of your changes, or is that?
No, the build-to-rent was, in a prior version, the only thing that was changed is just what you have on this multifamily buffer.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor to anyone here who might be here to address this change, and actually, there's two here, there's a resolution and there's also an ordinance here, so this, this will be the opportunity to speak to both. We'll address them separately, but as from a vote standpoint. Anyone here like to address the council? Okay, seeing no one, then I'll close the hearing, and we'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5422, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document entitled 2022 amendments to the 2021 residential design standards for planned area developments.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 5422 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddlestone?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next is considering an ordinance, can I get an ordinance number, please, Gloria, for the second part of this?
Ordinance number 1397.17.2.58, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the 2022 amendments to the 2021 residential design standards for planned area developments by reference, amending section 17.40.015 of the City of Casa Grande municipal code concerning design standards for planned area developments, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1397.17.58 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddlestone?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, we have no executive session tonight, but we do have reports, so we're down the homestretch here, and I will start to my right, Bob.
Yes, busy couple of weeks, even though we skipped a week on council meeting. Mayor, I enjoyed your presentation at the Biz Outlook luncheon, always enjoy hearing you speak about accomplishments and things that are coming, so that was very nice, enjoyed the underpass dedication, the work done there was excellent, and it was a proud moment for our community to have that dedicated. This, this week, I'll be attending the APS Energy Update at CAC on Wednesday, I'm not sure if any of the other council members will be there, but I will see you there if you, if you are. I also wanted to give a compliment to Kevin, I know, I know you contracted out, but the company that we utilized for the resealing of the pavement in Vilago has done an excellent job, I'm a resident there, and they kept us very well informed of what restrictions, if any, were going to be done, and anyway, it looks great with the new striping on it, looks like a brand-new neighborhood, so thank you for that.
I wish I felt like you.
Lisa?
So, the mayor was unable to attend an event with the Casa Grande Alliance, and so I was able to go, and I'm really glad I did, but it was a film on child trauma and connecting the dots, and I, I, I don't know if any of you have seen this film, or if you've been involved and, and done research on what's going on with our children and trauma, and, you know, with all the discussions with mental health issues, it was timely, especially for everything going on right now. So, I know, I talked to the mayor, and I, I, you know, told him I would really like to meet with Bob Shogren and just kind of see, but I wanted to read some of the statistics in case, in case none of you do go on, I mean, it's, it's www rememberingtrauma.org, but these were pretty interesting statistics I really wanted to share, that were just amazing to me, but one in six children between the ages of two and five receive a psychiatric diagnosis. Young children exposed to five or more significant adverse experiences in the first three years of childhood are 76% more likely to have at least one delay in their language, emotional or brain development. The majority of youth in detention, three-fourths females and two-thirds males meet criteria for at least one psychiatric disorder. Over half of our youth in detention have experienced at least six trauma incidents prior to arrest. 26% of children in the United States will witness or experience a traumatic event before they turn four. As the number of childhood traumatic events increases, the risk for the following health problems in adulthood increase, which are depression, alcoholism, drug abuse, suicide attempts, heart and liver diseases, pregnancy, high stress, uncontrollable anger, and family, financial and job problems. So, it, it, when they talked about trauma, you know, you think it's witnessing a death or whatever, but there could be so many different things that are trauma, it could be an experience at school, experience with family, experience with friends, so, but what we can do as a, as a community, and that's what I would like to see what we can do, you know, they talked about resilience and the child's ability to bounce, bounce back, and there's protective factors that are involved, and some of those perfect, protective factors include, you know, individuals which are healthy and strong peer relationships, high self-esteem, emotional self-regulation, positive coping skills, of course, working with the family, reliable support from caregivers, and extended family, and clear values and expectations for behavior, but the third is community, and that's where we can maybe do something here, and that's presence of mentors, school engagement with families, positive norms and opportunities for community involvement, and that's where Bob Shogren really would like to sit with us, you know, they, they talked about Evergreen, converting Evergreen into a learning center, and this is, you know, something that, you know, where they, they feel that they can kind of focus on some of these areas, but it was, it was a great film, great program, and if, if any of you want to kind of go on this remembering trauma, that, that has the film on it, but Mayor, I really hope we can sit with Bob, and I know Don is on the board, you're still on the board, right? Casa Grande Alliance? And Jeff, so I'm sure they, you know, know a lot of this, but I'm glad I was able to attend.
Thank you, Lisa.
Oh, and then, as far as, you know, we talked a lot about planning and zoning tonight, and I just wanted to thank one of our planning and zoning members that had to step down, Dennis Dugan, I just wanted to thank him for all of his time and commitment to planning and zoning, yeah, he has some health issues, but I, I just wanted to pay, thank him publicly for everything he's done. And thirdly, I just wanted to thank our Casa Grande Police Department, there's been a lot of challenges, a lot going on in our city, and these guys have been on top of it, and, you know, it's tough, and, you know, there's criticism, and people don't think, you know, we're, we're acting, and you guys are working so hard and doing some fantastic things in our community, so thank you to our police department.
Ditto that. Mr. Powell?
Well, I think Gloria ought to get some of the glory for the underpass, and I want to make sure we acknowledge you.
Very good.
And I was one of the first critics you had, and you straightened me out, so I, I fully support you. I've, I've had a real bad day, one of my best friends died of a brain stem bleed yesterday, and he was going to be our, he was going to be our grand marshal at Cowboy Days, and he won't be around to do that, but I've spent some time out there with his family, and, very sad situation, and he and I had quite a few adventures, so, going to miss him.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Matt?
Thanks, Mayor, first of all, I want to echo the underpass dedication and, and thank Gloria a lot, she did a lot of the work, I know there was a committee, mostly made up of artists, and if anyone knows about working with artists and how much fun that is, it is I, Gloria, so, you know, there's a lot to be said, it's like herding cats, I'm sure for you, but the project's beautiful, my family happens to own a business on that side of town, so we drive, you know, my mom was there at the dedication, she goes, I've been driving on this overpass every day, four times a day for 35 years, and it has never... times a day for thirty-five years, and it has never looked this good." So it's a sense of pride for Casa Grande, and it goes along with what we're doing to, you know, building these entrances to our town and, and just having some more civic pride. And while we were there with the artists that had worked on it and the committee, they have new plans, Gloria, I'm sure that you've heard about them, for even doing more stuff there, so that's what we get. But just something to be proud of as, as a community. Got to Kevin, the Santa Rosa Pavement Project, I know that was a big thing for you guys, and nothing went as it should have been, from bad substrate levels to equipment exploding, but, you know, I talked to some of the residents out there, they had concerns, and they're, they're happy with the results, so it, it took, you know, you have to live through some pain to get, to get the glory of it, and so I just want to commend you guys for dealing with a lot of adversity and coming out on top of it, and just, I don't think you get to hear the good stuff a lot of times, but they're, you know, overall, after it's all done, everyone's like, "Yeah, thank you." So good job to your department for that and challenging. I got to go out to the Podium Club, which is part of the Apex Motorsports Complex, which is not in the city yet, but on our planning area, and I got to actually ride and then drive a car on it, and I went even faster in that car than I did in the Lucid that I got to drive, and it was exciting, and they let me drive their car, so I was impressed, and it was a lot of fun. The track is awesome. I mean, they have a lot of stuff started out there, and it's going to be, I mean, I don't know much about tracks, but I could tell this one is amazing, and they put a lot of time, money, effort into it, and they even have some little bit of infrastructure out there, and, I mean, it's going to be a great asset to our community and, and the whole county. So it's a lot of fun, if you ever get the chance and know a member, you should do it. And then Saturday night, I got invited to the dinner for the Penalt County Veterans Memorial fundraiser, and they had a nice dinner at the Catholic Church Community Center, and to get some fundraising opportunities, they had a comedian, so that group is all volunteers, they've dealt, you know, they got the wall going, they had a little bit of adversity a few weeks ago with the graffiti, and it was donated by everyone to get it, not everyone, but Cooper Painting, to get it covered up quickly, and so they are going, they have big plans, and they got, they have the bronze bust, they had it on display of a veteran, and it's amazing, lifelike, life-size bust that's going to be one of the centerpieces of it, so it was really neat to see, and just, man, you got a dedicated group of people there, and thanks for inviting me, and it was, it was really great to see everything, so they are well on their way and have great plans for it. That's all I have. And thanks to the Youth Commission, and Kendra one more time, and Crystal at home, I mean, I, I can't say enough about them, and I hope, you know, when you get thirty-five years, you get a video, so if you would have stayed, we would have had a video. You know, you get nine years, you get the plaque and the flowers.
Thirty-five years.
But yeah, she knows how to make you nervous, so thank you very much. I'm going to miss them, but we've got plans, so thanks.
Donna?
Yeah. Just a couple things, you know, the Underpass, Gloria, it was, it was wonderful. Jody did a great front-page story for us on it, and, and we've had several comments, so just a reminder, we do have some boards and commissions coming up that have some vacancies, so whether you're involved in airport, community services, the public safety, or the historic preservation, be sure to get your application in on that. And I, you know, Lisa had mentioned about the police department, and we had a press release that went out today that the Casa Grande Police Department was working with the FBI. And, you know, with, in light of everything that's been going on in Texas and some of the other states, I'm just so proud of our police department, and not just the work that they do, but the collaboration they have with other agencies, that we were able, you know, to take somebody off the street that makes some terrorist threats. That's not the community that we are, and I'm just, I'm really proud of the work that they do. The last thing I wanted to mention is that there's kind of a hidden secret in Casa Grande. In certain areas of Casa Grande, some of the scouts are actually putting out flags for, for community members, and I, I have some flyers, and for thirty-five bucks a year, you get six different holidays, that they will actually come to your house, put the flag up, come and take it down, and it's a great community project for them, and it helps raise funds for the, the boys and girls to be able to go to camps and things like that. So I have some flyers, put some stuff on social media, but I think it's a great asset to our community, especially for, for those people that may not be able to put flags out on day, and we got Flag Day coming up next week, so if you're interested, be sure to check out their social media. That's it.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Lavender?
Well, I want to congratulate all the class of 2022 students. I thought all five of our local high schools did a phenomenal job with the celebrations. I want to give a shout-out to Steve Hardisty. He and I coordinated having three hundred eighth graders at McNapp Park on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, and that park is such a great addition to our community and the work that they've done. We had wonderful water fights that day, kids, it was just great to see eighth graders acting like kids again, and so it was a lot of fun. Also, Steve organizes our Friday social for City each week, and congratulations, Steve and Paul, for winning last week.
Loaded group. Loaded.
Well, you and I will take our crown back soon, won't we, Mayor? And then I want to thank Councilmember Huddleston for coming out and being a part of our B-Wall celebration in May, and Councilmember Powell, you're the last one I need to get out there, those up here, I'm looking forward to getting you out in the fall.
Where's that?
At the B-Wall, we do it at Vilago.
The B-Wall.
We want to get you out in the fall.
Be all you can be.
Hey, I can do it.
And our Casa Grande's favorite boxer is now nineteen and oh, or as he says, twenty and oh, because he counts the exhibition fight he fought against me for the Vilago students, in which he knocked me out as one of his twenty victories. But he continues, Jesus continues to do well, and I know a title fight is coming his way, but he really represents our community, you know, first of all, by competing, but also the way he carries himself. He takes the time to talk to all students, fans, the boxing gym that he has open for kids to go in there and learn boxing, great asset for our community, so congratulations to him on nineteen and oh, and looking forward to his next fight.
Thank you. Well, lots, lots going on, to, to Bob's point, considering the time of year we're in, but I did, I did a ribbon cutting this morning at nine o'clock at a place called Smart Dollar Store, and it's a small independent business person who's just opening, they opened today, and they're in the Safeway parking lot, so right near where the new drive-thru coffee place is going to be, it's right behind it. And if you get a chance, go in there and please tell them hello. They moved here from St. Louis, they brought their entire family, they opened this business, and it's, I mean, you can get, if you have a party, birthday party, you can get the whole package deal, you know, with napkins, all matching, just buy it in a box. So they've got all kinds of stuff in there, so it's kind of cool. So I'd encourage you to try and go by there. Also had a chance to meet the new CEO for Banner Hospital today. His name is John Scherf, and he will be taking over for Brian, Brian Keller, who, who actually has already started his new job. He's running two or three of Banner's hospitals now up in the valley, and so, but I, but I'm hoping this, that John will, will fill the shoes that Brian had filled while he was here. Brian did an amazing job while he was here, has a lot of other plans for the hospital. They really have improved the overall hospital itself, from the neonatal care facility that was rated like number one in the country here recently, to, to improving and doubling the size of their emergency room, so just a lot of, a lot of good stuff, and, and having their own helicopter now, so, so we have, we actually have helicopter service here in Casa Grande that is run by Banner, so, since we lost the one that was out at the airport. But it's, it's a, it's a big job, and I wish John well in his, in his new endeavor. We've got, I did the Memorial Day program out at, out at Mountain View Cemetery last week on Memorial Day, and we had probably two hundred and fifty people out there or so, and it was actually cool, it wasn't cool, it wasn't hot, let's put it that way. It was pleasant, and it was a good, good remembrance event, and it was good to see everybody out there, and it's always good to remember our veterans who, who served and, and gave their ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms, so that is really what Memorial Day is about. And then we did have the PRTA board meeting last week, so we are pushing that, the vote for the PRTA to the county, the county has to ratify or basically approve it, and then it will be on the ballot in November, so you get to re-vote on the half-cent sales tax that you're already paying, and it allows, basically, this just makes it a legal tax versus, according to the Supreme Court, an illegal tax. So it changes like basically one word in the, in four seventeen, which is the, the proposition. So anyway, you're going to hear more about that. And Gloria, thank you to you and your, your team for the Union Underpass, I know I'm repeating everybody else's accolades, but it was a great event, great project, it really is the start, I think, to us improving Florence Boulevard and our, and our cityscape, which is really our entrances, our monuments into the city. Next, we'll tackle Penal, but right now, we're going to work on, we're going to, we're going to work on Florence and make sure that's done. I also got the opportunity to meet a new business who's coming here to town, they bought the, the SS Blinkie, and it's, it's called Fusion Sign and Design, and they're actually a very large company, I didn't realize it. They have, they have operations in, in Colorado, operations in, in California, and they are coming here to Casa Grande, and they will actually be making signs, and I'm talking big commercial signs, so it's not, it's not to compete with Randy and the sign shop, this will be, you know, big, lighted, commercial signs, so pretty exciting, I was excited to meet them, and, and they're excited to be here, so that's, it's, it's a fun deal. And then I wanted to remind everybody that we do have, and the, our community services department, and especially Steve Hardisty, who is here tonight, thank you, Steve, that we have the opportunity for every child sponsorship, which is a program that the city does every year, and there's an application, you can go online, it's called the OEC, and donate money to this program. This last year, we had two hundred and fifty-six scholarships that were awarded totaling ten thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. So what it does is your donations are used to help kids who can't afford some of the city programs, it actually pays for those programs, and it's everything from soccer to basketball to volleyball, gymnastics, ballet, dance, arts and crafts, really all of the youth programs that the city puts on that has a cost, it helps fund those programs, and will allow for scholarships for, for some of our youth who can't afford to participate in those programs. So I would ask that you, you know, reach out to Aaron Walters, Aaron is, kind of runs the Community Rec Center, you can get ahold of him there directly, or look up online and find out the applications, because the applications are out. And then just one more item, and, and I know Lisa mentioned it, but a good friend of mine who's been on the planning and zoning for five years has, has some issues, and I would ask that the community pray for him, so, thank you. That's all I have. Anybody else? All right. Meeting adjourned, thank you.